Just. Let's be brief. There's all the ways for little part of me. Back to job, back there for a job. People. Next. I'm sure that they come already books and got dealt with. So running up plan, plan for that week, everybody loves but the ors platter is a one pound meat box. It's in both and it's all vinegar, vinegar.
Meeting for Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty five, five thirty P M, D M S Chocolate Administration Building. Mister Crow.
Sir, this is Cameron.
Present.
Mister Roscoe.
Present.
Mrs. Crumley.
Present.
Mister Crow, present.
All right, uh, pledge allegiance.
Alleged by the United States owner, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico.
No changes?
No.
Okay. No changes to the agendas, so we'll entertain a motion.
After a moment, we adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Mister Crow.
Sir. This is Cameron.
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley.
Yes.
Mister Roscoe.
Yes.
Mister Co, yes.
No public comment. On to reports, any dimming?
The longer president or president, but I got it back today. All that fun stuff. So I'm here to ask you about the salary increases. I understand that the state has a purchase for four percent, right? Yeah, okay, it's always three or four, yay us. But I think I'm ready to say what I mean, I mean, always says, which is that we refer as much as possible that we do across the board. We are excited that on scholarship night, we will be giving four scholarships to deserving students, and those will be at five hundred dollars each. We had some outstanding applicants this year, so we decided to get four. We just couldn't decide, it was so close, and we're just like, we'll do four. Um, let's see, we did have our party, our any of them party a couple of weeks ago. Nice turnout, a lot of fun getting to know people outside of work and everything like that. I stand for any questions?
Question by the board? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
On to consent agenda? We can't emotion?
We'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mister Crow.
Yes, sir. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mister Roscoe?
Yes.
Mister Thorius.
And on to action items, action item A, consideration of out of state travel. For students participating in Skills USA Leadership Conference, June twenty third to the twenty eighth in Atlanta, Georgia. Mister Ortiz.
Mister President, members of the board, and now superintendent. Um, we come before you today to request for out of state travel once again for Skills USA, our professional organization. Um, it is our career technical student organization through Deming High School C T E. Um, we qualified seven gold medalists, one of those medalists winning two divisions, uh, previous. Help a doctor student, um, there's three advisors that have two gold medalists apiece, myself. This is Alpadaca and Mrs. Gomez. Um, this was the first year we have taken video students, photography students, and one of the teams of two extremely well. Um, they had to document a video of the whole conference and spend four hours the Friday morning of competition, prepared that. And presented it to the judges and they went with flying colors, so that's a gold medal. So very exciting stuff. Progressing through inviting other classrooms in, we took welders this year. Um, to, like I said, video, healthcare, culinary. Uh, one of my students that. She got her freshman year, got second to last place last year as a junior, got second play, or as a sophomore, got second place. And this year she got a gold medal, so really working towards, you know, boiling all the gears and just making it work for us. But it will be a, um, a summer travel date. It will involve, um, grades ten through twelve and us three advisors as well. Um, my student Ethan Lopez here is a gold medalist in customer service. He wanted to speak on behalf of the national conference and just give you guys a little bit of information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, Superintendent, as a member of the board, I just thank you for being here today. Also, I'd like to thank my champion leaders, Mister Ortiz and Miss Albraca. Not only this, but still USA is an extreme opportunity. It's one of the largest skilled workforce gatherings in America with over six thousand five hundred state champions from across the U S and multiple U S territories. Not only that, but there will also be multiple attendees of over seventy thousand five hundred in total, thousand completely volunteered judges. They'll be held at the Georgia World Congress Center and is an extreme opportunity for not only people here in Deming, but also across America. It's a great place just to, uh, just to say thank you and that we would love the out of state travel, which you can look like.
Have you been there before?
Never even.
First time?
Never even on the plane.
It's gonna be an awesome experience. Any questions by the board, any other comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Here I move that we, uh, approve the out of state travel for our students participating in Skills USA Leadership Conference. Being twenty third through twenty eight, two thousand twenty five in Miami, Georgia.
I'll second that.
Mister Crow.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mister Roscoe?
Yes.
Mister Crow, yes.
You guys are going to Atlanta?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And when he comes back, he has to.
Report back. Um, I'm to consideration of budget adjustment requests, Mister Adcock.
Uh, yes, uh, Mister President, members of the board, superintendent, uh, Nips. Uh, I've got several, um, bars that are submitted to you today. Some of them are increases, some of them are decreases, but I'll go through them as, as quickly as I can and, and stand for any questions. Um, starting with, uh, the bar number sixteen, uh, that is our Title One Fund. That is a great, a large reduction of seven hundred twenty nine thousand dollars. That is essentially our carryover that we, that, uh, pet had had us, uh, estimate at the beginning. Uh, that ended up not happening, um, but we had, uh. Uh, places in there so that we could make sure that, uh, we have the, the budget or we could reduce the budget and, and not overspend on that. Uh, the next one, number seventeen is also a reduction. Again, it's, uh, the final allocation versus the estimated, uh, that we had at the beginning of the year. This is for our Title Four Funds. This is a reduction of, uh, forty one thousand dollars. Uh, the next one, we did have, um. I'm gonna talk about number eighteen and nineteen together if I can. Uh, both of these affect our S E G. Uh, one is a, a small reduction of five thousand dollars, um, on our S E G on the districts. Uh, due to final, uh, numbers that they have. But the number nineteen, we had a fifty five hundred dollar increase in S E G, which essentially the, uh, the amount that the district keeps. Uh, for the charter school. Uh, so those two together, we had ended up with a net increase of about three hundred and fifty eight dollars that I was, uh, put in, in educational supplies. Uh, number twenty, um, this is an increased bar for our operational. Before Ms. Chavez left as superintendent, she submitted to the, to P E D. And asking for us to have the ability to spend some of our S E G money on capital improvements. I included that letter, uh, in the packet. Uh, the amount is not to exceed eight million dollars, so this is, uh, uh, our cash basically that we had. Different from what was anticipated versus what we actually had as of June thirty of twenty twenty five, uh, twenty twenty four. Um, so I was, the increased bar is basically cash and then it's for those, uh. Uh, capital improvements. Uh, number twenty one is another increased bar. Uh, this one here is for our gate receipts. Um, whenever this was budgeted for, for this fiscal year, it was done based on our cash balance, um, estimated cash balance for June thirty. Uh, this is to increase it, uh, for the revenue, uh, that we've earned through December thirty first. Again, it's just, uh, to, uh, give our activities office, uh, the ability to, to make some adjustments in there, uh, as they need to. Uh. Number twenty two, uh, is also again another of the awards versus what we thought we were gonna have or what we originally planned on. Versus what their final allocation is, this is an increase of eighty two thousand dollars. Uh, number twenty three. Uh, this one is just a transfer bar. Um, what I'm doing here, um, if you remember in our audit report that we had last, uh, last month. There was a handful of, um, there was a finding on the budget authority, there was a handful that. Uh, we didn't have enough budget for, it totaled like two hundred dollars, we talked about the, the, that it really wasn't a lot. But this is to help make sure that we don't end up with that finding again. Again, this is for the, the county tax collection fees that we have. Number twenty four, we're just, um, making some adjustments to, uh, cover, uh, some projected negative balances in benefits. Uh, benefits is really hard to identify upfront because we have movements and we have salaries and, you know, our, um. Increases and that type of thing, so it's really hard to keep track of, so we adjust those as we go through the, the year. For our federal funds. Uh, number twenty five is another, uh, transfer. Again, this is just moving, uh, to, to align with stuff that we need, um, between now and the end of the year. Number twenty six is another, uh, transfer bar, we're moving some funds for some professional development. And, and supplies for the exceptional students, uh, department. Number twenty seven is a movement for some, uh, professional development so that we can go to a, a, a two day workshop. Number twenty eight is additional funds for, uh, new and new teacher inductees, um. So that we can cover that. Number twenty nine is we're just correcting some, some lines to cover some, uh, some negatives. Uh, number thirty is also to move stuff around to cover, um, some negatives. And or purchase some supplies for our pre click, pre K classrooms. Number thirty is, um, another transfer to, um. So that we have them going into the proper accounts, um, so that we can get that spent by the end of the year. Number thirty two is we're moving some funds, uh, from supplies or actually from, uh, some benefits. To supplies that cost over a thousand dollars, um, so that we can purchase a, a refrigerator, uh, in Columbus. Number thirty three is, uh, an adjustment so that we can cover, uh, salaries for our, so that we can do some home, uh, visits. And then the last one, number thirty four is also to help us with that audit finding that we had. Again, I'm giving it a little bit more of a buffer so that, um, we don't have that finding for next year. Did you have any questions for any of those? I know I went through a lot of them very quickly, but I'm willing to, to stop and go back to any one of them that you may have questions on.
Questions by the board? I think so, Mister Adcock. If not, entertain a motion.
I make motion. And we consider the budget adjustment request from sixteen to thirty four.
I'll second.
Mister Crow.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mister Roscoe?
Yes.
Mister Co, yes.
All right, thank you, Mister Adcock.
Thank you.
Onto item D, I'm sorry, item C, consideration to accept quote for. Five hundred eighty nine thousand six hundred and eighty six dollars and sixty nine cents from C E S vendor. A S E Construction for Bus Barn Construction. Mister Stoffer?
Uh, Mister President, members of the board, this is George.
Apologize, Mister Wu.
Yeah, how are you guys? Good evening. Uh, so what you have before you is a cost proposal from A C Construction to purchase, uh. Assemble and erect a, uh, metal building for the bus barn at transportation. Uh, part of the work will include, uh, not just the purchase of it, but the erection. Of the, the, the steel building, the excavation of thirty three, uh, footings, forming concrete, anchor bolt installation. We've actually also requested some security, a card reader, R F I D, possibly access for that bus. Uh, bus barn area, uh, exa- excavation and disposal of soil, uh, equipment, crane, boom, boom lift and forklift scaffolding, concrete. We've also included the electrical bay lights and some exterior wall packs for safety, uh, reasons. And then because it's a fifty by two hundred and fifty foot long bus barn, we were having to relocate some of the gates. So all that is included in the price, uh, with. Also included is all the architectural engineering and, and building permits, um. As you know, and you guys are probably well aware more than I am, um, we haven't had any, any real coverage for those buses and they. They tend to get baked on with the sun, they're out there in the elements, so, um. This will ensure that our assets are getting taken care of if our district mechanic is having to go out there and, and work on a unit. You know, he's able to work on it, you know, with some, some, uh, some shade. Uh, we, we've also included some electrical outlets, so he has power easily accessible to him. Uh, this is getting paid from S B nine. We're able to realize this because we're, we've made some savings just because of, I know Mister Words has, um. Done a lot of the asphalt repairs on his own, uh, we had some legislative money come to us or is, or is coming to us, uh, to help. Uh, do the repairs at the auditorium restrooms, uh, and then some safety and security monies that we also realized from public schools capital outlay. Um, so with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have on that building.
Oh, I just got a question, uh, it'll have a dirt floor or it's gonna have a concrete floor?
It'll be dirt.
Okay.
So it's, it's all, it's all gravel right now.
Okay, repeat the, the size of this building?
It's fifty foot wide by two hundred and fifty foot long, so essentially it would. Cover almost the entirety of that where all the buses are at right now. We would be able to store about twenty buses in that bus barn. So the district, so let me, let me put it out there so you guys can have something to, to look, uh, approved. So the district is requesting board approval to award A S E Construction as a contractor to assemble and erect. The bus barn for the transportation yard.
Hattie, do you have anything to add to that?
So Mister President, members of the board, superintendent, and I'm. The only thing I would add is that not only will this protect the value of our buses already with just our activity buses alone, it's about two million dollar investment that the district has. You know, set aside for that, we had one new activity bus last year, we've got another one coming this year. We have one new sped bus coming in this year as well, so that will bring us to a total of fifteen buses out there, like you mentioned. It's got room for twenty, up to twenty. Um, so not only for our mechanic right now, he's out there working and he's exposed to the sunlight. Also our bus assistants who are responsible for keeping up with the upkeep of the inside of the buses. Um, and then like right now with the dust storms, it's not completely enclosed, but it is, is gonna protect those buses from. The southwest winds and dust, I mean, every, every chance we get, we're up there or in there cleaning the buses, but during these windstorms, I mean, it piles up pretty bad. And so just the exposure, we've got buses that are already peeling right now, um, the paint job on the hood, and so I think this would be a great investment. I, I assume the cost is a lot, but over time it will pay some.
That's my only concern, I mean, we're six hundred thousand and we're a metal building, it just. Have we, have we done any other cost comparison to anything else out there that's, that's comparable to see if we're in the ballpark?
That's what I would defer to Mister O, you know, he's.
So Mister President, uh, so I did visit with another, with another general contractor who actually believed that the cost was a little low. Um, but we did not formally request, they bid, this is actually through a cooperative. Because we wanted to try to expedite this and get this done before the end of the fiscal year. I know that this has been a project that's been on the radar for a, a little bit of time, uh, so we wanted to get it done. Um, but, uh, no, as far as formally reaching out, we have not done that as far as getting two or three other bids, no.
And it really, it's a, it's a big building that just. It's a big cost too.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of work involved with it, especially because of the infrastructure we're, we're bringing in electrical into it, there's a lot of footings. It's gonna have a roof, it's gonna have, you know, the walls on the sides and we're gonna have to bring those out, so there's a lot of work that's going into it. And I think in the end, I think you guys will be extremely happy with the way it's gonna look and it's gonna cover the majority going north and south of that yard.
Yeah, is there enough room in that yard for the, once you put up the building to be able to get the buses in and out safely and effectively?
There's actually, we would actually be short about maybe thirty, forty feet. Uh, if we wanted later on to, to get another bay in there, we could entertain getting another bay to fit in the, the rest of it, so yes, it will fit.
Yes, ma'am.
One thing I remembered, I don't know if Mister O mentioned it, but it also includes the card reader access, which just improves and helps the level of security. Um, as we all know, right now we have that keypad, but this way we would have a side kind of like the badges we have now. And so that cost is included in the, right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions by the board? Do you guys have any blueprints on what it looks like or what it would, what it would look like or any pictures after the fact? I mean, or something similar, I guess, um.
Mister President, so what we do have, because we're purchasing this from, uh, M and T is what we have is we have. Uh, some preliminary drawings, it is a Mueller building, so it's a prefabricated, uh, metal building, so we do have some. Uh, drawings that were provided to the contractor, uh, so that he could provide a cost proposal to, to bid the project. That was one of the other things that I just wanted to mention, there is, it was gonna be somewhat difficult to find a general contractor that would. Buy an existing building off of somebody else without going straight to the manufacturer and then still give us the warranty. Uh, that was gonna be somewhat difficult, so I just wanted to put that out there for you guys. One of the other things, Mister President and members of the board, President, uh, Superintendent Nips is, as you guys know and are hearing around the. Uh, the country with these tariffs, prices are just starting to go up and up and with steel, it's gonna be. Unknown what that's gonna look for, look like for us in the near future, so I, I, I think we're getting a bargain. Um, but, uh, I'll leave it up to you guys to, to decide.
We'll move to accept the quote for five hundred eighty nine thousand six hundred eighty six dollars and sixty nine cents from C E S vendor A S E Construction for Bus Barn Construction. Awesome.
Mister Crow.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mister Roscoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mister Crow, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister.
Thank you.
On to consideration to accept quote for seventy four thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars from C E S vendor Dimming Excavating Inc. For perimeter fencing project at Smith School Building. Mister O again, or sorry, Mister Words, I apologize.
Not a problem, um, President Roscoe, members of the board, Superintendent Nips. Uh, what we have is a quote from, uh, Deming Excavating to, uh, uh, replace. Repair and upgrade our perimeter fencing around the Smith School area, we've had, uh. Multiple break-ins that have been in the back of the school and that has kind of led us to this. We'll be using, uh, the safety security money that was, uh, given to the district. And we will be really encapsulating that right now, there's about four or five. Openings in the fence that we can't lock up and we'll be eliminating those down to. One main drive in fence and a couple of walk in fences, uh, to get to the side of the building. Uh, it'll be eight foot tall all the way around and it'll be that commercial grade chain link fencing that goes all the way through it. Uh, so, uh, I stand for any questions that you might have with that.
Should by the board? Now I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, we accept the quote for seventy four thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars from the C E S vendor Dimming Excavating. Regarding the fencing project around Smith Administrative Build, Building.
I'll second.
Mister Crow.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mister Roscoe?
Yes.
Mister Crow, yes.
Right, thank you, Mister Words. Onto consideration of award bid, twenty four fourteen dairy products, Mister Jones?
Yes, I'm here. President Roscoe and our superintendent, members of the board, before you have the consideration of award for dairy products for the twenty five, twenty six school year. This is, um, a standard, um, bid that we do, it's for years. Um, and with USDA currently, milk, um, has to be provided for, um, all reimbursable mills. And I stand for any questions?
Questions by the board?
Mister Roscoe, uh. Mister President, members of the board, superintendent Nips, Miss Jones, the, the form that was given to us by, uh, Miss Cardoza did not name the. The person that was getting the award, could you tell us who that's gonna go to?
Yes, it's gonna be, um, G and H Dairy and it is a new company, currently we are utilizing, um, prices, um, creamery.
Thank you.
Questions? Now I entertain a motion.
Dairy, first is out on. Miss Jones, didn't you, is, is this from El Paso?
It is El Paso, yes.
Thank you.
I think it's a local company too, one of their dairies is right here down highway five forty nine.
That's correct, they, they do, uh, they're, they're conjoined.
I will move. Uh, could, award for the bid, twenty four dash fourteen dairy products.
Good.
I'll second.
Mister Crow.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, onto item F, consideration of approval of bilingual education application for SY twenty-five, twenty-six, Mr. Chavez.
Um, for you is the application, uh, for our bilingual cultural education application for the, uh. Nothing, uh, besides numbers that have, we're going out about twelve hundred kiddos. In the past few years, we've had a decline from a couple of schools that that, uh, we we've closed program. Uh, but now we're from the the sixth or the five, excuse me. Six schools that have programs, uh, where over twelve hundred students are that are still part of, uh, in some sort of a dual language program. Uh, this is just to approve the applications that we've submitted to the public.
So there's an increase? A decrease.
Actually, it's pretty steady. I think we're down maybe. So as the seniors graduate, our kinders kind of fill in the.
Okay.
So funding has an impact.
Any questions by the board?
Which schools don't have it anymore?
Uh, Memorial Elementary and Bell. Sharp Will never had one.
I'll move to approve the bilingual education application for school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll second.
Mr. Crowe.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, yes.
You're not going anywhere, Mr. Chavez. Um, consideration of. Consideration of consideration to accept migrant education.
I just doubled up.
Just wanna make sure we're gonna consider. So consideration of consideration to accept migrant education program parent advisory committee bylaws.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Nips, um, this this here is. Um, a compliance piece for the public, uh, education department are, uh, um. Well, you'll be seeing our McKinney virtual one coming up next month. But for the for this month, this this just helps us, uh, solidify that our PAC does have a certain level of responsibility. Uh, through the state that we have to submit this part of the guideline, and we have to make sure that what that is in place. Um, it hadn't been brought to you before because now with this new new unified application, which you'll be hearing about next. Uh, next month when we present it, um. There's a, there's a bunch of pieces that we are able to clean up and make sure that we have, because there's a natural place for it now. So things kind of fit in a little bit better in some areas. So, uh, we just wanna make sure that you all are up to up to go as to what. What's expected by our parents and how we meet with them on either a quarterly or monthly or quarterly basis in our our district meets with them quarterly.
Questions? Don't entertain a motion? Undertain a motion if no questions?
I'll move it to accept the migrant education program parent advisory committee bylaws.
I'll second that.
Mr. Crowe.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, yes.
Alright. Thank you. Onto consideration of approval to allow an amendment to the board policy. In a single meeting as permitted by policy B dash twenty-six hundred. BGB for the purpose of aligning the district's graduation requirements in policy. I dash seven, three, five, zero IFK.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Nips. Uh, similar to last month, we were asking you to waive the two-meeting requirement to shore up our, uh, policies. Uh, Ms. Reinhardt and her team found that our current graduation policies were not in alignment with state law. Um, and so they will present what that looks like here in a minute, but we need to, uh, approve getting this done in a single meeting.
Questions?
We'll move to approve to allow an amendment to board policy in a single meeting as permitted by policy B dash two-six-zero-zero BGB. For the purpose of aligning the district's graduation requirements in policy I seven-three-five-zero IFK.
I'll second that.
Mr. Crowe.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, yes.
And with that, on to I, consideration to adopt amendments to policy I dash seven-three. Five-zero IFK graduation requirements to align with the current state law. Mrs. Reinhardt.
Yes, President Roscoe, members of the board, Superintendent Nips, we come to you today to ask you to approve. The following policy I seven-three-five-zero IFK. When we adopted policy in July of twenty twenty-four, I think it was July, it defaulted to a po- a graduation requirement. Policy that was old law. And so what we needed to do was to revise these policies and the this policy will go away in this. Version will go away in four years because it only pertains to the cohorts graduating through twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight. And so we would ask you to consider adopting this policy. It is in alignment with what. The students know, the parents know, it's in the staff handbooks, and it is aligned to state law. So, and we have Mr. Lozano, Mr. Apadaka, and Mr. Simpson should be through Zoom to stand for any questions. If you have any about this different programs or the schools.
You said that this will go away?
Yes, because this policy is, this version only affects the cohorts for graduating classes twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight.
Okay, I miss.
Yes, it's just a version?
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt the amendments to policy I seven-three-five-zero IFK graduation requirements to align with state law.
I'll second.
Mr. Crowe.
Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, yes.
Thank you. On to item J, consideration to accept, Mr. Apalaka, you can't go anywhere.
He was trying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Consideration to accept. Uh, graduation requirements effective starting class of twenty-twenty-nine for Dimming High School and Early College High School. Mr. Lozano and Mr. Simpson. And Mr. Apalaka.
Where is Mr. Simpson?
On Zoom.
President Roscoe, members of the board, Superintendent Nips, we stand before you to ask you to consider. We, um, accepting the policy I seven-three-five, oh, I guess it might have a new number. I'm not sure how that works. This is for the class of twenty-twenty-nine. And further, so, and you you guys first the presentations at the last two board meetings. About those graduation requirements. We have Mr. Simpson, Ms. Lozano, and Mr. Apadaka. Here to stand for any questions about the twenty twenty-nine graduation.
Questions? Pretty straightforward, not not much change currently, what we're doing.
So currently, we are, Dimming High School is at twenty-six, uh, the state minimum is twenty-four, and the new ones are also twenty-four, so we're moving to twenty-four. Um, like we previously discussed, um, it's gonna give us more opportunities. We're staying at a separate credit per year. So by the time they graduate, it'll be about twenty-eight, so they have those four credits to work with. Um, so a senior that passes all of their courses, they will only need three. But we're making it also mandatory that they attend, a senior has to attend five classes. But there's courses now that we incorporated like internship or executive internship, where if they have like a work study or a job. And they have proof of that through the counselors, like they say they work at right after their lunch from one to whatever. Those two will count as two courses as well. So we want them to be full-time students, but at the same time, give them opportunities to work. And if they're not working, uh, we also offer dual credit courses as well, or internship without. The executive part, which means a work part, where they can get like soft skills, like, uh, resume building, public speaking. As well to kind of help with that transition after high school.
And then the smaller changes to the classes themselves is introducing physics. As a second year for our students that have taken Algebra One in science, and then as well. The personal finance that adds to those soft skills. Our students don't have that within the constraints of. Any of their core other than financial debt as seniors, but now they're gonna have it in social studies.
Good, and that'll be the sophomore year, personal finance and economics.
Good. Any other questions by the board? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move consideration to accept the graduation requirements. Effectively, starting with the class of twenty-twenty-nine for Dimming High School and Eric College High School. I had to pause and everything, because I don't know if I'll be around in a while.
I'll second that. Mr. Crowe. Mrs. Cameron?
Yes.
Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe, yes.
Thank you.
We don't have to worry about it to twenty-twenty-nine, I guess.
Onto announcements and requests for agenda items by board members. The next regular meeting will be held May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five at the at five-thirty P M. Please be aware that this meeting will take place at Red Mountain Middle School located at twenty-one at, located at twenty-one hundred Highway four eighteen. In Dimming. The reason for that is the the furniture. Delivery is gonna be delivered into here, and so there's meeting room to to sit down. So that's why we're changing it, just for this one meeting, and then we'll be back the following month.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Nips has some announcements as well.
Okay.
Well, we'd like to, um, it's time to start thinking about, we had the work session on the bonds. But I'd like to have a work session May eighth to discuss, because we need to get that. We need to make a decision soon, so May eighth we'll have, uh, Mr. Adcock was gonna confirm with the company if they can come, but May eighth we'd like to work session.
I'm fine if you'll bring your birthday.
Sure. You guys.
Any other notes? Onto superintendents' reports, conflict of interest disclosure.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Nips. Uh, in December, we awarded a bid for maintenance supplies to Ace Hardware. Um, at the time that the award was done, we were not aware that there was a conflict between the ownership of that company. Uh, and one of our employees, uh, the owner is the brother of Ms. Treviso. Uh, we, policy says we're supposed to tell you before the bids are awarded. Um, but we didn't find out. She didn't even know her brother had bid on this until way after the fact. Um, so we just wanted to bring that to you guys in transparency. Ms. Treviso has filled out the appropriate form. She has no vested interest in her brother's company. Um, so other than that, we stand for questions, but we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware.
Any questions by the board?
For making that, uh, public, so that there's no. Uh, all of that.
None. Onto presentation by Tom Sullivan, Superintendent Search Consultants.
Good evening, folks. Uh, this is Tom Sullivan, and and with me this evening is Dr. Linda Paul, uh. Uh, we we managed to, uh, get together. I really appreciate your consideration. I hope you guys haven't gotten blown away. It it's been windy up here.
It's pretty bad down here. They've closed the interstate and several highways.
Wow.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate you.
Good planning. Yeah, the, uh, the traffic lights were blown out at the intersection of I forty and Tramway Boulevard.
Wow.
Yeah, and if you're on the west side, you can't see the mountains. If you're on the east side, you can't see, uh, the mesas. It's pretty. We we got a taste, I guess, of what you guys experienced.
Wow.
But anyway, uh, Mr. President, board members, Madam Superintendent, uh, thank you for this opportunity, uh. Uh, I certainly was looking forward to being there with you in person, but, uh, uh, here we are, uh. I did send a packet, uh, to Mr. Turner. I don't know whether you have received that. It had an outline of our. Uh, work plan for this, uh, this evening, the things we wanted to cover and some samples. Some samples of some of those things that, uh, uh, we've seen elsewhere that are. Different in their nature, maybe a little bit, but, uh, just to help prompt the conversations. There are samples of a number of the things that, uh. Uh, we would need to, uh, work through agreement with you folks about before we could post that. Uh, Dr. Paul and I were just talking about the fact that if if we can get through all of this, uh, quickly this evening. Uh, even getting feedback from you in terms of if you wanted to have, uh. Uh, logos or photos that are up, uh, you know, current. Uh, we still think we could have a posting on the streets by, uh, Monday of next week. So just wanted you to know that upfront. Let me stop for a moment and let Dr. Paul jump in and introduce herself real quickly.
Good evening, everyone. I know some of you, we were, we've done this before. Hi, everyone, and thank you so much for choosing us again. We look forward to, um, to this process and to making sure that you have. Some wonderful candidates, um, to consider for your new superintendent position. So Tom is the lead. I'm gonna be the backup and the support. Um, hopefully, I'll be there on the interview day once we get closer to the to setting the calendar. To meet you all in person, but if not, I'll be active behind the scenes, making sure that, uh, things are going smoothly. So. Hi, everyone.
Because Dr. Paul is so much younger than me, she has far better technological skills, so.
We'll see.
I I do need to mention to Mr. Crowe, Board Member Crowe. Uh, had an interesting experience recently, uh, a school board in a fairly remote district, uh. Uh, offered a candidate a one-year contract at the bottom end of their salary range, and by golly, it was accepted in a heartbeat.
So you never know.
That that that's in the interest of full disclosure, just like your previous, uh, presenter, sir.
Thank you.
But anyway, uh, we got a chance to meet and work a little bit together at the conference, uh, in Santa Fe, so it's it it is good to see you all again. And as Linda said, thank you all very much, but, uh, why don't we begin and try to work through this if that's okay with you, uh, Mr. President? The first thing we would wanna know is what are the required and desired qualifications that you would like to see? And, you know, we'll have this discussion and then we'll we'll finalize something that we know you've agreed upon. For example, uh. How many years of teaching experience? How many years of campus administrative experience, central office experience? Um, any, uh, doctorate, uh, there are certain things of that nature that some districts wanna see. Uh, and depending upon, uh, you know, your needs at this time and, uh, you know, how many years in some of these different roles. Uh, you know, your, your team, uh, including your, uh, superintendent, your administrators and your staff. Uh, you know, how how many years of those things will it take for them to be respected by everybody else that they supervise? So that's a question for you folks. Uh, we do know that, you know, there are minimum number of years to even get their their foot in the door with administrative licenses. But currently in New Mexico, and it's about to change dramatically, there is a one-size-fits-all administrative license. You get an administrative license and you can perform any function from special education to H R to superintendent to principal and. Everything in between. So, uh, what are your interests in this particular area?
By the board? I mean, do we need to re, we don't we don't need to recreate the wheel. I think we had something before, and I don't know if it needs to be. Much different than what we had before.
I I I mean. I was looking at what we're requiring for our principals. And I think there was a five-year minimum and of teaching, so I think we need to do that. Um, I actually like that Bloomingfield School, the district that you have displayed. I know it's eight years, but. I mean, eight years preferred, but the minimum of five years at the very least. I think that's, I think that's reasonable. If a principal is requiring to have five years of teaching experience before they become a principal in our district. I think we need to have that.
I bet you agree in that case.
The it it, I mean, that's the bare minimum, but the, you know, that's what I see.
Of course, the masters with the administrative license is a minimum.
Yeah.
As well.
The years of teaching experience, we can tell you, uh, has sometimes become problematic for a board because they. They had that higher number, and then a candidate that they really liked that had gotten into the applicant pool. Had a year less, and it was like, okay, what are we gonna do? had a year less, and it was like, okay, what are we going to do? Wound up discussing it with their attorney to be sure they were allowed to do what they wanted to do.
Do you think that it's better to have like a range of years, or do you think it's better to just set the floor and leave it at that?
I I think there's there's pros and cons to both, to be honest with you. If you just set the floor, that's that's really helpful. If people have more than that, then they're they're going to tell you that. They're going to bring that up. If they have less than that, then that will maybe dissuade them from applying for the position. So I personally like the this, the bottom number, but I serve at the pleasure of the board.
The 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 language that was thrown out, uh, a minimum and then adding preferred. Uh, that can be appropriate in some of these other qualifications. You may say central office experience preferred. Minimum number of years as a campus administrator required, something of that nature. So, uh, if, are we good with five-year minimum? Am I hearing that? Uh, that'll work for all of you?
Yes.
If principals are required to have that, they got, we got to have that for the superintendent. It's got to look.
Sure. Yeah.
Sounds good. Uh, what about administrative experience? Uh, what what our experience has been? If the superintendent has not walked in the shoes of the people that they're supervising, it will be very difficult for them to earn full respect quickly. So what we would recommend, certainly campus administration, the number of years is certainly your call as well. Uh, and, you know, then move into any other things that you might want to ask of them to have as a, uh, you know, preferred requirement.
Same. Yeah, you need to have sometimes about a five years or. Three years.
They they put down three years. What, why is there only three years of that? Could basically somebody that has had, can be a principal for three years, can apply for a superintendent position? Why is that? Why do you do the three years? Or why why have some schools done three years? Man.
That's that's what the school board in Bloomfield wanted to to do. Um, so again, it's entirely up to you. If you want to put five years teaching and five years administrating administrative experience, we're comfortable with that. What do you think?
I think I like the what Espanola did. It looks like three to five for Espanola. I think that, I think that would work.
Is.
And then do you want us?
Go ahead.
I think, uh, at least the the five-year and then at least three years administrative. If you have it, but five probably would be better.
Uh, I think so. I think five is would be.
Because we 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 have enough people, I believe, in in, uh, in Deming that, uh, do have those experiences. And
Okay, great.
Those five, so it's not like we have to go break up someone that has that much experience.
Okay.
On on that point, Board Member Cameron and other board members, uh, I think that's really important. What you don't want to do is either accidentally or intentionally exclude one of your quality in-house candidates. You know, if you accidentally write, uh, you know, one additional year that that person isn't going to meet. Uh, that can be problematic. It it can be a, uh, public relations issue, in fact. In in fact, we we saw that happen in a district. I'm not making that one up either. I think it led to a lawsuit.
I don't know. I just know my experience of being in the.
Or how about, how about we had preferred to it? And then does that give us some some lateral movement? Yeah.
So so what I was thinking is if our, because, um, Mister Turner had provided us with a couple of old job postings for upper-level positions. So if an executive director of learning services is required, was required to have a minimum of eight years experience of increasing responsibility in public school administration and supervision. I mean, my thought process is that three years minimum of the same sort of responsibility of a super superintendent position seems too low. If if we're requiring eight years minimum for an executive director, I mean, I think the superintendent should be at or above that, probably.
I would agree with that.
But I don't know if eight years is too too much.
We we can put it in the middle and do four. Or five.
I like five for some reason.
Five?
What if it was, uh, five campus or central office experience?
You know, I I really like the language, though, about increasing positions with increasing responsibility.
Yeah, that is good.
That's great language. So if we can do five years of administrative experience demonstrating, um, an increase in responsibility.
I like that.
Yeah, that works.
So five years?
Yeah. That works.
Got it.
All right, what, uh, anything that you would want to be preferred? You know, we've worked with districts, we're right, where it was experienced in a multicultural setting, uh, I mean, really multicultural. Uh, and then, uh, you know, bilingual is certainly a another thing. Previous superintendent experience has been a listing for some board. So, uh, please, again, what, uh, are there any preferred, or do you think we're okay with the way we've done the administrative experience thus far?
Bilingual preferred, just because we're the 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 families that we serve and the community that we were.
Yeah, that that makes great sense for you guys. It really does. You're not saying required, but certainly preferred.
Preferred, I'm sorry, I missed that. Preferred bilingual? Okay, good.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm just taking notes.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, you know, we we draw a pretty clear distinction between the things we just talked about, which are qualifications, you know, has to possess, you know, be eligible for New Mexico Administrative License, and then these things that we've just outlined. There's a difference between that and characteristics or qualities or whatever else we want to call this next activity. Uh, you you should have in your packet about, uh, maybe two pages in, a page that says uh, candidate skills, qualities and areas of strength. Uh, there are ten of them. What we have found is nationally, this is the set of skills that are expected of superintendents to greater or lesser degrees. Uh, you know, a quality superintendent will probably exhibit all of these to some degree, but maybe, you know, be stronger at another. But we want to find out from you is which of these are most important to you as of April seventeenth, twenty twenty five?
And can you see the list on your screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
They're in alphabetical order. There there's nothing magic about them. Uh, we'd be glad to try to explain what what we, you know, what they mean further than what it sounds like. I'll give you a quick example. Communication systems is not just whether the person can person can speak in a group. It's what ways are they going to blast out information to all of your constituents? That's the system. So, yeah, I think you can, I hope that's a good illustration, but we're going to ask you folks to each identify three from that list that you think are most important in Deming, New Mexico now. And I'm not sure who you would want to turn that list into, but we'd like you to do it independently. You know, either call them out or turn them in on a piece of scrap paper. I would have brought something nice for you to do. But we we want you to do it independently because our suspicion is that you're going to come up with a minimum of five just out of this. And then we might want to try to whittle it down because five is about as many bullet points as you want to put in an advertisement. And I think you may have seen one that had a narrative with the skills and characteristics built in. Uh, and others with bullet points. So again, those are optional, but uh, I'd encourage you not to have more than five in in your, uh, that, I hope we can get down to five, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Linda, please jump in.
That's that's exactly right. So if each of you could select your top three, and then Mister Turner, maybe we impose upon you to, um, to read off the results of the individual board member's decision.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I should have jumped on this to thank Mister Turner. You have been awesome. You, uh, I appreciate all of the help you've, uh, given us in getting up to this point tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to tally them on the screen. So you tell me when you're ready, and I will start writing then.
You've been taking the test. You're about to fail.
Harder than you thought it was going to be, isn't it?
Apparently, apparently so. Sorry, I'm hurrying. No, that's okay. Standing right behind me ominously here.
You know, what what I would reassure you of is that all of these issues will be addressed in a formal interview. It's a question of how many questions will be addressing these topics? And we'll probably have multiple questions than addressing the ones that you're most clearly interested in. That's how we see this working for you.
Definitely want to have a sit-down about the the questions because I want to make sure I get some questions I really want to ask.
Oh, absolutely. Now, we we are going to work with you to develop that set of questions. Uh, and frankly, we'd like to do it the same day that we're out there with you screening, uh, the applicants.
Sounds good.
Okay, are we ready, Mister Turner, for some tallying?
Yes, ma'am. The first one is integrity and values.
Okay.
Instructional leadership and school law. The next one is integrity and values. Superintendent Board Relations. And Public Relations. Communication Systems. Public Relations. Finance. And for extra credit, school law.
I love it. We'll put it up there. Why not?
I would have sold that extra vote for a dollar if I would have.
Integrity in values. Instructional leadership. And Communication Systems. And that is all of them.
That's all of them? Okay, great. So it looks like um, we've got integrity and values have two votes, and then we've got school law. I'm sorry, three. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, and then uh, instructional leadership has two, communication systems has two, P R and school law. So there's your five. If you're happy with the five, doesn't mean the others are not important.
It does certainly look like you folks have, uh, confidence in the way, uh, personnel is being handled. Uh, and and technology and safety and security. Uh, they got, uh, zero, uh, votes. Uh, you know, congratulations on on those three, uh, you're being confident in.
Oh, wait, safety and security, that's.
Safety and security.
There we go. There's the five.
So, uh.
Are you okay with the list of five?
Yes.
Finance and superintendent board relations got got one each. But if if you're comfortable with where you are, uh, then we will build, uh, those things into the, uh, the formal advertisement.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Uh, I think I mentioned that we we think we can turn this around for you, uh, as soon as Monday. Uh, the questions, uh, then would be closing the date. And if if we're out on the, uh, that's the twenty-first, uh, we think that we could close on Friday, May sixteenth. That's, uh, nearly four full weeks, which is typically what we 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 look to, uh, give, uh, an application window. And I know that that's the day after your May board meeting. Uh, but, uh, at the very least, I could give you guys a report on, uh, you know, what that candidate pool, uh, you know, is beginning to look like, if that was helpful at all.
It would. I think so too.
The day after, and you want to try to do it the day of the.
Yeah. Yeah, the the application window in this suggestion, and again, if you folks, uh, have better ideas. Uh, I think we're trying to collapse this even a little bit tighter than you did in twenty twenty-one because we're a little bit, uh, uh, late in the process. So we're trying to push this a little bit. If I'm getting ahead of you, please slow me down.
Were you saying, sir, that you would provide a report, um, at the May fifteenth board meeting?
I could give you a sense of how things are coming along, the total number of applicants in, what, whether they're in-state or out-of-state. Uh, you know, just what our general sense of the applicant pool is, uh, we could give you that update.
Perfect. That'd be perfect, I think.
Okay. Great. So then typically, we need, um, a little bit of time to get the applications all organized for you. We, um, we accept all the applications. We're going to initiate a brand-new, um, email address that we'll use simply for this search, so that all correspondence from the candidates go through the same email address. So once we we receive all that information from the candidates, we like to put them into a readable packet for you. Um, so that you can kind of go through one, two, three. Everything is in the same order. And it'll be, it'll facilitate your reading of those, um, applications. You will see all of them. Um, we will, we can sort them if you want. We typically sort them into two piles. Read these first, read these second. But again, you'll see them all, and there have been boards that have selected from the read these second pile and loved their new superintendent. So it's very unique. Every every board is a little different. Every community is very different. So how does that sound to you?
It sounds good.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
But the, uh, you know, we'll get around to enough time between closing the posting and and working with you again on screening and an interview date again to make sure that we're, you know, working around any potential conflicts and not knowing, of course, what your school schedule necessarily is towards the end of the year. But, uh, I guess the next question for us in the the major part of the advertising would be, where do you want us to advertise? We can tell you that, uh, let's tell you two things real quickly. A A S A, the American Association of School Administrators, has been a good site for us. Uh, they'll probably cost six or seven hundred dollars for a, you know, four-week, uh, ad. But we've gotten nationally qualified applicants in a number of our searches through that. We wouldn't spend a penny on the Albuquerque Journal. Uh, and we always ask a district what your obligation is with your local media in terms of advertising, uh, meetings and such. Uh, it I know that there's a Las Cruces Sun, there's an El Paso Times, uh, and I know there's a Tucson paper. Are there any, uh, any papers or or county papers, you know, where you guys are that you would want to consider putting an A N in?
And you have your H R person sitting right with you.
Well, we're we're going to do all the freebies. Please, uh, let me make sure that you know, we're going to advertise through, uh, the coalition, the Mexico Coalition of, uh, Administrators. We're going to advertise through the School Boards Association, through C E S and through REAP. We're going to look for all of the freebies, uh, and, you know, try to get the word out, uh, uh, you know, beyond New Mexico borders. Uh, I have met and talked to the Executive Director in Texas, and he was kind enough to point some people in our direction on a search on the east side. Uh, plus, the way it wraps around, I don't know. How how comfortable are you guys in recruiting in, uh, Texas or Arizona? There is some community, if I mention Texas, I'll get my head bit off, so.
I grew up in Texas, so I can.
Well, then you might know what I'm talking about.
I might.
I think those, like, those work. I don't I don't think, you know.
I don't see anything wrong with a wide net.
Yeah. And we'll definitely take advantage of our of of our district and and, uh, our social media, uh, platform.
Yes, of course, absolutely. So do you want the El Paso paper and the Tucson paper to be included? Is there a county-wide newspaper to include?
See the need for that?
I don't, I don't know that the newspaper would be helpful. I don't, I don't know that the newspaper would be helpful.
It's generally not, but if it's your thing.
No, I think, I think we're good. Yeah, I think.
Do you want the national advertising?
The AASA Journal?
Yeah.
I think so.
Here, that's going to say it, but I really think we live in this community, we, we're for this community. I think we ought to make sure that our community knows what's happening and that's why I would. I would say that we should. Uh, honor our community by advertising well, but I may be the only one that feels that way.
But if you post it on Facebook, they'll all know.
Yeah, yeah, there's other platforms that.
Yeah, we're, we're still going to post locally, I think. It's just not in the paper, as a slogan, I think.
Yeah.
Any, any community sources that you can, uh, uh, push this through would be great. I mean, your Chamber of Commerce, even something like that. I would suspect that you have, uh, relationships with any number of those community groups. Uh, with 5,000 students, you're a pretty good sized district by New Mexico standards, that's for sure. Um, I'll also bet you're the largest employer in the county. Certainly in the town by a long shot.
Yes, sir.
All right, now moving on to salary. We gave you some salary ranges that we've been working with recently. These are. Basically 24, 25 and 23, 24 salaries. So, um, again, we offer them simply as a discussion point. You are welcome to make up your own numbers.
Yeah, Espanola is about your size. Los Lunas is a little bigger, quite actually a bit bigger. Bloomfield is a little smaller.
We need to stay at that point.
Yeah, we can do that range, but yeah, we can definitely. Sorry, we were just looking at just what we have currently and it looks like we're between 150 to 169 is the range that we're currently in. For a 240 project.
Now, you, there is a, there is a 4% mandate, as I understand it, moving into the next fiscal year for all staff. That would include your superintendent. Is that not correct or have I been misinformed?
It would.
Well, maybe we get them to donate six months, you know.
Now, the only reason I bring that to, to your attention is if you're using your current, uh, superintendent salary as your baseline. That was going to automatically go up by not an insignificant amount.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay if we just stay in that. We're in, we're still in that range though.
Okay.
So 160 to 170?
150 to 169, yeah. I think it, it'll, it'll still put us in that range for.
I mean, that's another thing, they're barely starting, so they're going to get a 4% bump right away. Let them get going. I said, that's the way I see it. Let them see what they can do and then. If it happens again, it happens again, I mean.
And here, here's the delicate question. Uh, do you want to have language that says something like a multiple, multi-year contract may be considered?
I think you, it doesn't hurt to say may.
Well, I'm being respectful to you guys because I know we had a pretty good conversation about this.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. I'm fair with it.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if somebody knocks your socks off and you want to be sure you don't lose that person, you've got that option, Mr. Crow.
I think it makes the advertisement more attractive, um, to include that language.
This is the issue. Superintendent gets a multi-year contract, yet regular people. We got several people, they get one year. And that's the issue that I get. Everybody in this room has a one-year contract. And that's where I feel it's unfair. You know what I'm saying?
We don't.
We don't. You know what I'm saying? That, that's what I'm saying. And that's where I come from. Is when I see everybody else has a one-year contract. Gasp, did they give you a two-year contract?
Yes.
They give you a one-year contract. That's where I'm coming from with that. Because everybody else, I know you don't get a one-year contract. So, or two-year contract or three-year, everybody gets a one. That's where, because I want to make it fair for everybody else. And that's where, where that came from. It didn't come just from, you know, imagination. It's, I'm seeing everybody here with a one-year contracts. That's the only thing I say.
So with that being said, um, thank you. Do you want to go with the multi-year contract may be available? Or do you want to not put that at all?
Well, we can just put it in, it's fine.
All right. Thank you very much.
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah, it's me.
Because you're not automatic, you know, we haven't met him really.
And then, um, this preferred starting date, when do you want your new superintendent to start?
Yesterday.
Yeah, you're, you're going to be looking at July 1st with your fingers and toes crossed at this point, I'm afraid.
Right, if it goes to, we, we have an amazing superintendent right now, so it's working out really well.
Yes.
And so, we're, we're in good hands, we are in good hands.
Well, the, the, the good news about that as well is that that could allow for a really smooth transition, even if it is on a, a, a short time, timeframe.
Yes, sir.
Well, um, I think we can move on to, you know, filling out some of the things on that, that timeline. Um, but a couple of those things require us to discuss your. Interest in involving staff and community in the process. Uh, via some kind of an advisory committee, uh, system. Uh, we've used, because boards wanted as many as three and four committees separating. Uh, staff and administration and parents and community, even students. Uh, so, uh, you know, any and all of that is doable. Uh, as large as your district is, we would encourage you to involve. Some level of community participation. Uh, I, I heard somebody speak about transparency. Uh, people will feel a whole lot better, uh, if, if they know that, uh, there was that kind of input.
Yeah, I think so. I think that at least a minimum of three, um, groups, I think the board itself, the community and then, uh, staff.
Excellent.
I think would be at least a minimum.
You guys did it really amazing. Dr. Paul, you did it amazing last time. It was such a smooth, I mean, they interviewed with everybody the same day. I think it was a smooth transition.
Yeah. The wheel got created and, and it's there. There's no sense in recreating the wheel, so let's just go with the words.
Well, then what we would, then what we would want from you and, uh. We'd start with three, three nominees, uh, each for each of the committees and see where that gets us. In other words, uh, and perhaps again, Mr. Turner, if we can, uh, you know, impose on him so that we don't get duplicates. But let's say each of you has five staff, uh, three staff members that you would like to see involved. Uh, and I, I know that you had a, uh, a, a union representative address, you guys. So if you're in a CBA. Uh, I'd certainly encourage, uh, a union representative to be part of that staff committee. Uh, but if each of you nominate three, the most we would get out of that is 15, that's manageable. There'll be, somebody will have a conflict and won't be able to come, but. Uh, likewise on the parent and community side. If each of you board members submitted the names and contact information, but we'll come back to that. Uh, for, we'd start out with 15 people from, you know, two distinct and important constituent groups.
So we'll do one advisory committee, that's the community members, and one advisory committee, the staff. Is that correct?
So we pick six people, we're going to pick six people, basically, each board member.
Correct. Three for each group. And if there are duplicates, uh, what about, uh, any legislative, uh, interest? Or are there, uh, do you have a tribal presence? Is there any, uh, any representative of a, of a unique group?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, that being said, um, part of what helped the last one go so smoothly is that we require that all. Um, advisory committee members go through an orientation with us. So we can do it in person, we can do it over Zoom. Um, we have a Zoom account, so we can make it convenient for them. But it really helps things on, um, on interview day. Because as you know, we can't ask certain questions. We can't ask about their religion and their marital status, et cetera, et cetera. So we have put together an orientation because most of these folks don't do hiring in the public sector. So we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page and that we're able to, um, to honor the, the law and the intent. And yet get good information from everyone. So, um, we'll just need your support because if. It, it's been our practice that if you don't show up at the orientation and we'll work with them, you know, we'll reschedule or whatever. But if you don't come to an orientation, you may not participate in, um, the interview day. Because there's that much liability at stake.
Yeah, and, and I, my intention would certainly be there to physically meet with these folks and, and provide that orientation. Uh, I, I, I think that's, that's important. Now, if somebody can't make it, our, our backup would be that Zoom. Uh, we want to be respectful of, of conflicts that, that folks will have, but our, our first choice would be that, uh, we, we get to work with people in person.
Sure. Okay, so we would love to have your nominees, if we could, I'm looking at the. At the calendar now, if we could have your, um, nominees, let's say by May 1st. Is that, does that give you enough time to select your six individuals, three staff and three community members?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, then, that, thank you.
You know, uh, please, please give them as, as much information as you feel is necessary, you know, what, what the, the work that you're asking them to do. And that there would be two, two time commitments, probably a full day for the interview itself and about an hour in this orientation program. Those would be the keys, but, uh, we're going to communicate with them directly and it would be certainly good if we weren't doing it cold. So if, if you guys can kind of let them know what this is about, then they won't be surprised when they hear from us.
The other thing that will. I'm sorry?
Can we tell them that you're going to buy them a steak dinner?
No, but you can tell them we'll go buy them lunch.
And, and actually, and, and you're going to have coffee and donuts the morning of.
Yeah, gonna feed them. My only, now, we usually send a sample email for you, like a sample script. That you could use when you're inviting your staff member or your community member. So you're welcome to use it. You don't have to use it. I'll go ahead and send it, um, tomorrow, just so you have kind of some of the, the bits and pieces, the dates, et cetera. So again, you're welcome to use it, you're welcome to discard it.
Well, and you're also welcome to just tailor it to your personal style, but the content may be helpful for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, um, if you guys could turn. To the, let, let's stay on the, uh, the promotional materials for just a moment. Uh, we did send you, uh, and they were, they, they were much nicer before I had to scan them and send them. They were really nice and colored copies that I, I was going to bring. But there are, uh, sample brochures from Bloomfield, Pawaki and Dexter. That, uh, each have different, uh, different styles. Uh, you know, in terms of landscape versus, uh, portrait even. Uh, we have done, and you'll notice a number of them that, that they would. They would print out like they would trifolds because we've had districts that have done that and, and had them out on their own counter in central office or elsewhere. Uh, like you said, getting the information out. But we can do this anyway. What we're more interested in hearing from you about is, is content. And, uh, you know, we can work with your chamber, we can work with you certainly for logos and pictures, but, uh, what are the? The things that you want to market about your district that will attract applicants? Uh, you know, proximity to this, uh, the, the amenities, the, the nature of the community. What, you know, w- will wordsmith these things for you? But, uh, what, what are some of the things that, that you think, uh, are important, uh, to attract and keep the staff that, uh, you need and already have?
I think the district, you know, is one focus for sure, you know, uh. And what it's about and students in, in the, the population that we serve.
Great.
Yeah, and that, that's true too. We have a lot of it in the strategic plan as well, so maybe we'll use some of that.
Wonderful. Oh, that's so helpful to know you have a strategic plan.
Oh, okay. It's very new. We just, we just did it a few months ago.
Yeah.
Great. Yes, that was, is it on your website?
Not yet.
Not yet, Mr. Turner said, but probably by this evening, he said he'll get it.
Yeah, next Thursday, man.
Thank you. That would be lovely. I could have a copy, that would be terrific.
We certainly.
No, go ahead, sorry.
No, please, sir.
Do, do we have to describe our community too? Is that what we have to do there and then brochures?
We'll have to.
Or what did we do last time? I don't even remember.
Last time, um, I, I used a very, um, comprehensive look at the district. And I had, we had pictures in there, we had narrative, narrative about the district, about the community. We had, um, student enrollment per school. We had a lot of information. We've, we've moved more towards, um, this two pager, mainly because, you know, people's attention span. A little less than they were back in the day. And so what we'd like to do in the trifolder and the two pager is number one, highlight the district. Um, and some of the wonderful things that are going on in your district. And then number two, kind of highlight the neighborhood. You know, your, your city, your county, what's happening in the area. Um, and, and then put in the specifics, the actual job requirements for the superintendent position. And then the due date, what we want, all of that good stuff. So, um, that's typically what we do. We can draft one and get it to you and. Believe me, there is no ego left in my writing, so tear it apart, make it better. I'm, I'm more than happy to, to, um, to share it with you and have you take a look at it.
One of the reasons that we've pared it down and are giving more basic information. Is that we want you to see that candidates that you invite in have done their homework. That we didn't tell them what they should already have found out on their own to impress you about the fact. They wanted to be with you enough to learn that much about you and, and be, be able to respond to questions with, uh, you know, the detail that they should research. So, anyway, that, that, that's part of where we're coming from on that.
Yeah. I think that'll work.
All right. And Mr. Turner, if you could also send me, um, a clean copy of the logo, of your district logo. And, um, and pictures that you have permission to use, um, in the public. Or if you want me to just pull them from the website, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
As you noticed there, th- these pretty much all have mission, vision, principles, uh, core, core principles, values and such. And, uh, so we, we'll find that on, from your material and make sure that it's prominent as well.
So are you ready to move to the timeline?
I am, if those folks are.
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. So we have to draft in there. Um, I filled in some dates already, starting at the top. Um, the third row down, the position advertised, we have that down as, as April 21st to May 16th. And then the next row, names and contact information is May 1st, that's your homework. Um, and then the application window is going to close on 5/16 at 5:00 PM. And then the orientation meeting for the advisory committee, um, we can schedule that at another, another time. But what I'm more interested in is the board screening the finalists. So, or screening two finalists, because your, your schedule is going to be, um, a little bit more challenging to, um, to coordinate. So when the, the position closes on the 16th, on May 16th. Like I said, we need a couple of days, but we could be ready by Thursday, the 22nd. It looks like maybe Thursdays are good for you. As a board, we're flexible, so we can, we can work any day of the week. You tell us what days are easier for you, um, to get together.
This could take a half hour or it could take three hours, depending upon, you know, how, uh. How quickly you guys reach consensus on the quality of the candidates.
Yeah, and right around that time too, we got graduation, so.
Oh, of course.
Back to Loria and all the other.
So maybe we need to push.
Well, we can't push it back too far.
Not too far, but give us enough for that week because we have a lot of.
Yeah.
Things going on that week.
Tail end to like the 30th of May, or maybe like the 30th of May.
Or the 29th of.
29th. 29th of May.
29th? Is that okay for you?
That's also a Thursday. We thought that Thursdays, in fact, we wish that we could have hit your regular meeting dates for some of this. But if Thursdays are the days that you folks have managed to come together for meetings, we would think in those would be, you know, ta- days to look at for some of these things too. if Thursdays are the days that you folks have managed to come together for meetings, we would think in those would be, you know, ta- days to look at for some of these things too.
Okay, so we'll just need a special meeting announced for that day, and you tell us what time you want the meeting and we'll be there. Or Mr. Solomon, it will be.
Five thirty. Yes, ma'am. Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Five thirty.
And what I will like to do then is schedule an orientation at four at on that same day. I think that would allow staff enough time to participate. And ideally, it's late enough in the afternoon where your community folks aren't being dragged away from work too too prematurely.
Okay, great. And then we're going to, um we're gonna need the interview dates um or interview date. So if we select finalists on the thirtieth, um let me digress just for a second. Are you planning on attending the law conference?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, because the law conference is June five, six, and seven. So um what I would suggest is we go to the next week for interviews and we'd really want to do them in Deming if possible, because we want people to see the community, we want them to be engaged with your community. Um and so the week of the ninth is way is wide open, so you tell us which day works best.
July?
The week of June eighth or ninth, however you look at the week.
I think that'll work.
So we, and what, we would do the interviews, what, like on the thirteenth, that Friday, or?
You could, you could do him on the eleventh on Wednesday, because school is gonna be out. So I I believe by then, please correct me if I'm wrong, but usually by middle of June, maybe you'll have some summer programs going, but it's not the big um regular school year, so.
We we've often looked to do Saturdays, because we didn't uh wanna drag people away during their weekend. Most of them were more than willing to make that commitment, but with people being on vacation, whatever works best for you folks.
Right. Any day of the week is okay with us.
I think Saturday, last time we did it, Saturday would be, because then everybody would be they wouldn't have a job, they wouldn't have issues or places they need to be. I'm I'm, we did it, last time we did it on Saturday, didn't we, Dr. Paul?
I thought, I thought we did, I thought we did.
I I think that's the better way, and if you guys are still gonna be at the law conference on the previous Saturday, then the fourteenth is where we're landing, it looks like.
That works.
Lag day.
Oh, it's the day before Father's Day, too. The the eleventh.
Oh, is that right?
I mean, yes, you're absolutely right.
I'm fine with, I mean, that way the, there's other people that can make it if they have jobs, especially the people in the community.
Sure, oh yeah, absolutely.
A would be, I I I'm just throwing it out there, if they don't.
That's great. No, I love it. I love it. Is is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so if you could put that in ink on your calendar, please. We will communicate that to the candidates.
I think the last thing, at least on my list, and maybe other things on on yours as well, but uh uh moving forward, who who's the best person from the board? I assume it's Mr. Orozco. And from maybe uh central office staff for us to coordinate with, for logistics on things. Uh you know, where meetings will be, uh you know, how do we have access to rooms, whether be, will there be tech support for the orientation? You know, those kind of things, uh for the for the the interview day itself, uh is there somebody that can help us get a room set up with uh coffee and donuts and uh
Mr. Turner.
There's just a variety of things like that. Is that point, Mr. Turner, again?
Yes.
The last time we did it, it's mid-school, because it was big enough to hold all that.
Yes.
At all.
We did, and the last time too, um we purchased lunch from one of the local um restaurants. And they delivered lunch to us. Um I just paid them with my credit card and uh I mean, I thought it was a delicious lunch, so I'm happy to do that again. Um if that works for the board, this way you're, you know, including some local businesses in this search as well in a very, very concrete way.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So um from the board, I'm sorry, you repeat who the number one board contact is?
It'll be myself.
Okay, great. And then Mr. Turner, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you got it. Got it.
Well, folks, uh I wanna thank you for for your consideration of the weather, for one thing, and then uh you work here with us thi- this evening even more so. Do you have any questions for us, or do any of your staff uh have any questions for us as we move forward on this?
I had a question.
Sure, please.
Yeah.
I was just wondering what your thoughts were about us doing this so late in the school year.
Who knows? Okay, there's, there's, you know, we've hired amazing superintendents in the summer, we've hired amazing superintendents in January. It i- it, everything is, every search is a little different, and so I'm not worried about it. And if, at the end of the day, you retain all decision-making. So if at the end of the day, we bring you a slate of candidates and you're like, oh, this is not gonna work, um we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll go to Plan B. I'm not, I'm not worried about that at all.
Yeah, you you can void a search and then you can actually recruit and appoint whomever you want. I think your attorney will will verify that.
Sure.
Uh but again, I I think this is the way to go in terms of community relations a- as well. But and and uh Adam Superintendent, uh we're certainly looking forward to meeting you as well, and sorry that that hasn't already happened.
I remember you from last time.
Yeah.
So if one other piece I wanna just make sure that you're aware of, so um in the past, we have done all of the background checking ourselves. And because of the ever-changing world that we live in now, I have contracted with a um a third party, with a firm that does background checks, criminal history background checks, employment background checks, um all of those things. So we're gonna be using a third party to do that kind of background checking for us. Your your successful superintendent still has to get a fingerprint-based criminal history background check in order to work in the district. So I can work with the with the with H R to make that happen. But I just wanted you to be aware of that. The other thing that we're working on, quite frankly, right now, is this whole idea of credit checks. And is it possible to actually um run a a legit credit check on your finalists? So I've involved Mr. Guillen, um he's involving the attorney, so as soon as I get that answer back. But you know, you're gonna place this person in charge of a multi-million dollar budget. And uh you know, the best predictor of future performance is past performance, and if they can't manage their own finances, I think you need to know about that upfront. But if if the attorney says it's not legal, end of story. But if the attorney blesses it, then um we're gonna include that in your package. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
We're definitely above the frame.
We'll do the professional reference checks, by the way. So we'll pick up the phone and call the people we know. And the people we will, we'll soon know, but the uh the criminal history, all of that kind of stuff, I'm outsourcing.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, folks. Well, again, uh we know you've got an executive session to deal with, so I I hope that that uh works out well for you, and thank you for your time again this evening.
One hundred percent, thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, we'll see you in person soon.
Right, sounds good.
Bye now.
Bye. All right, on to item eleven. Adjourn open meeting and enter into closed executive session. No action will occur or result as a result of the closed executive session. The board will enter into closed executive session as permitted by the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, specifically discuss the following. Limited personnel matters as permitted by section ten dash fifteen dash one H two of the act. Uh discussion of personnel, personally identifiable, identifiable information about any students as permitted by section ten fifteen dash one H four of the act. Meetings subject to attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatening or pending litigation in which the public body is or may be hemiparticipant as permitted by section ten dash fifteen dash one H seven of the act. And I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to enter into closed executive session and adjourn open meeting for the reasons stated by President Orozco.
I'll second that.
Mr. Crowe.
Mrs. Cameron? Mrs. Crumley?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Cole, yes. And I'd like to thank everybody for being here, especially the the weather with how bad it is and all the administrators that are here. Really appreciate.